Barn is, that is not really. And when we went through it, the, um, that little house was built in the 50s.
Yes. It was.
Pre-ordinance.
Okay.
And that's why.
That's why you're kind of, okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Yep, and it was built as a residence. Not as a garage converted or anything like that. It was built as a residence.
Yes, like in, let's see, who the hell, it was a flaming that started out living there.
Yeah, and they were your grandparents, right?
Yes, my grandparents, yes, yes. So I just, I, I kinda wanted to know the story in case it come up.
Yep, no, I got it. Did you sign in when he came in?
I'm going to.
Okay, awesome.
I, I had to get my surprise going on first.
Throw him off.
We have a side sheet up there and we just. Yeah, and then that goes with like the, the minutes and everything in, in the packet in the file so that we know who is here.
Madam Mayor, right?
That's right.
Madam Mayor, is that how I address you?
Yeah, speak sharp too, salute maybe?
Oh, that's not.
Yeah, no question mark on the end of that.
Right.
No, does not even go there. She'll set her bagels on me.
Oh, they're vicious too.
I don't know. I'm surprised I'm not on there though.
Mayor?
They came out and visited.
We have one bill added too, and then that agenda adjustment, just.
Money grounds?
Oh, for that.
Should be.
For the SRF, yep.
And got in.
We have current wages.
So he had a new truck and he hadn't seen it.
I know, I know.
Since he had a new truck, so he.
We have Jim, Jim's current wages.
I heard. And then, yeah, someone else, he called the landlord that he's raised from, and he didn't know, so he called the county. The county came out and he didn't see where I had this. Hillary's at the house and I'm like, damn, what are you talking about?
Twenty-three hundred, two Daniels.
Don't get mad, but I'm like, huh, I'm like, well, at least they're watching out. But then finally find out someone else, um, has been walking in and out of there that they haven't seen, but they were at home. When they could see them, get down there by the time they were done.
I wanted to clarify that.
Then they're parking, probably in the escars.
I thought we got him down to the 1677.
So the farmer for the land off the rail, what about?
I think so.
Okay. That's, uh, in the mystery, yes, in the Creek Ranger Center. They own that. So they give information to find that, so I find all that, so they were parked right at that one, after the first curve.
Okay.
And going in that way. So, I was like, yep, so I put a camera out for two weeks and, and didn't see any of it, so.
Thought he was seven one, but I figured.
Got two bucks, there's two bucks walking around there, so.
Oh, I know how to find you.
They were a guy.
Open.
There's a couple months they wanted to go through Meyer a lot.
And opening these tabs.
I can't wait.
Just always have. And then our base. Robbins was, I guess.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have a fever.
Uh, like, what do you say?
Yeah, the bone in the shoulder.
Oh, and Robbins?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, and then.
Pretty much that will be right now.
Started down. Two over the bridge, yeah. I'm like, I gotta turn up P2, let's turn that. There we go.
Just hanging out.
And I might.
You know, I'm like.
Yeah, I'd like to play harmonica.
Yeah.
You know what that is?
I'm gonna add that.
That was just, regardless of.
Seven, he's at, he's at seventeen eighty-nine.
Oh, he is.
So he's trade seven, step three. Yeah, it does that every day, because we have a lot of houses, yeah, yeah, they.
Seven three.
Yeah.
But if there's deer, if there's not a star, turn. Cause they hope.
Well, I have their current, so we can talk about, so the guy's currently at twenty-five sixty-one. And Jim's at seventeen eighty-nine is their current. We can look at that. How are we writing this? How are we? I need it. In a day. All right, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, June ninth, here at the, at Albertine City Hall. Uh, this is our regular city council meeting. Uh, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance, if you'll please advise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do roll call.
Counselor Trump is absent, Counselor Bozenberg here, Counselor Schontz.
President.
Counselor West.
President.
Counselor Myers.
President.
Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We do have one change, uh, thirteen F under new business. You can go ahead and strike that. So the, that is the approval of the SRF payment that has been wrapped into the claims list. So that does not need its own, uh, line item, so we will not have a thirteen F.
Mayor, I just realized I've got the first reading of the water rate ordinance listed twice. I got it listed up above as number nine and in old business.
Perfect, so we can also strike fourteen A because it is item number nine on the agenda. We pulled that out to be its own agenda item. Um, and if you'll all recall, we're blaming Danielle for everything this meeting, so it's Danielle's fault. The next few meetings that may happen.
I was gonna say, how, how long does that?
A while.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so with that, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes as noted. Moved by Schontz, seconded by Bozenberg, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed nay, motion carries. Next is our sheriff's report. We don't currently have a deputy with us, but they did provide a report, um, that, oh no, this is March.
They just gave him the mail. Really? Oh, we aren't, no, we did not, that's not to my knowledge. Danielle?
Danielle again?
You know I do have her speed dial.
I'm sure you do. Or did she have you on speed dial?
You did want it.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is, everyone want a copy or you want to just pass it down?
Ours are met, I mean, that's.
Yeah, ours are met.
Just of the information?
Yep, well, you scrapped the wrong one off the computer.
All right, you go ahead and hand it around and then.
Yeah, I bet him on that one.
Without a deputy here, we could document any concerns and send that on to, uh, our contact at the sheriff's office, so if there are any. Uh, I do want to say I witnessed, uh, I love our radar speed survey. I managed to be in a place where I could sit and watch it for a while and it, it, it works. It slows people down, so.
Is there a limit on that thing?
Can you drive? You're that red mark we have on the report?
I noticed it doesn't go up to three digits.
Yeah, that's right, just rolls over at that point, yeah.
Well, it's kinda like the gas prices.
Just keep rolling. So, I have talked to Guy about the potential of, it's not on this agenda, but looking at maybe getting another one so that we can have more than one floating around town. But other than that, I didn't have any specific concerns. We do have, um, a large presence of mopeds that have made their way into town. So far, I've not seen a huge issue with them. I did look it up, uh, there are things as moped licenses, so that is a sheriff's issue if we do start having concerns. It's not any, any kind of ordinance that we can pass because of their government, just like other motor vehicles, so. Any other questions or comments on the sheriff's report as it makes its way around? We'll make sure you get that in your email as well.
I have a little question.
All right, perfect. Next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have just two things this month. Um, one is, one that I do every year, and that is a reminder about golf carts. As the weather warms up, they make their way out, please remember, you must have a slow-moving vehicle sign, flag. You're not allowed on the main thoroughfares, so Roosevelt and Main, you can cross at those, but please do not drive your golf carts on those thoroughfares. Uh, and ours are sunrise to sunset, so. And you must be a licensed driver to operate a golf cart within the city of Albertine. The only other thing I have on my list is to thank everyone at this panel for leaning in on all of our special projects. It's been a busy couple of months, from our hiring committee to, uh, helping Guy with some of the outside projects, to leaning in on finances. There's been a lot going on and I just super appreciate the water rate analysis. Mr. Trump's not here, but I recognize all the work he put in as well, so I just want to thank everybody for leaning into their special projects. It is much appreciated. All right, and with that, we'll move to council reports, and I'll start on my left with Counselor Myers.
Nothing to report.
No.
All right. Item number eight is discussion of the proposed ordinance amendment pertaining to water rates. We had originally at the previous meeting approved a public hearing. We did not get that published, and also, it's not required for this particular ordinance. Therefore, we left it on here as a discussion, but it's not officially a public hearing since we did not get that published in the paper. But we still wanted to open the floor and have any conversations, um, or answer any questions that, that folks might have, so. The next item after this will be to, the, will be the first reading of the water rate ordinance to make the adjustment to those rates. So in your packet.
And it will be towards the back where, where previously was. It won't be in order, it will be clear back in, in the old business section. Probably the last thing in your packet.
So the first few pages of your packet, this is the water rate analysis sheet that Counselor Trump, uh, put a lot of time into. And it does, um, go back to fiscal year twenty and show how we've consistently, our income is not covering our expenses. So we're consistently short in covering our water expenses through our current water revenues. This year, for this fiscal year starting July one, uh, our estimated expenses are going to be about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Our estimated income is around a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so we are short just there.
How much of that is commercial? We'd have to break that out.
The rates are the same, so, um, yeah, I, I don't have an answer to that right now.
I was wondering how much is residential and how much is commercial, and what's the percentage of what's going on? Is one going up, one going down?
I mean, we're primarily residential.
Obviously.
So I would say, yeah, the majority is, but.
Maybe an increase in commercial, just thinking.
Yeah, I mean, they're same rates, our current ordinance, it's the same rate for everyone, so it'd just be their usage.
My question would still be what the percentage might be, if you give me the figures, I could figure it out.
Yep, fair enough, we can definitely get that. So in addition to the hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in expenses, we are required to hold an additional ten percent on top of that, which really puts us at needing, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenues for next year. And that's been consistent across the other, based on, uh, what Counselor Trump has put together. So for this current fiscal year that ends on June thirtieth, we are currently, without the ten percent requirement, thirteen thousand dollars short with our revenues. So expenses are about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, revenues are about a hundred and seventy-three. And you add that ten percent and we need to be at two hundred and five thousand, so. Um, we've consistently not been covering expenses, let alone including that additional ten percent. So the next sheet looks like these. Bring that one out. So this is where we did the analysis on consumption, uh, and where our customers are in relation to the gallons that they use, and what the impact would be based on the proposed increase. So the majority of our customers are between the four thousand and five thousand. And so if you look over, it represents about a seventeen percent increase, um, which also noted that water rates have not increased since two thousand and sixteen. So we've not kept up with inflation to that point. I know that's a hot topic right now on top of everything else, but even year over year, I mean, we're now, that's hard math, six years without an increase. And so that would bring. Oh, the next sheet will have what that actual dollar impact is based on the number of gallons, so. The proposed increase, if we're still on this page, if we move to forty-four dollars for the first thousand as the base rate, and then six dollars, for the additional gallons, that will increase our revenue to two hundred and twelve thousand, which gets us just above that two hundred and ten goal. So this will allow us to cover expenses plus the ten percent that we're required to hold without collecting any more than we have to. Any questions on this sheet? And then I'm gonna draw, I'm gonna have you flip one over this guy. Yep, right there, good. So this is a comparison of our water rates, um, to our neighboring cities, or all of our utility rates, excuse me, not just water. It's water sewer and storm sewer. Uh, some cities do wrap in things like garbage pickup and, and other things. We did break it out and get specifics so that it takes their, um, their charges specifically related to water sewer and storm sewer into account, so we, we removed anything excess. And what you can see down at the very bottom, for five thousand gallons, um, you can see that the current, or the current average in the area is about, for water would be about forty-three dollars for five thousand gallons. For sewer, it's seventy-five dollars for the five thousand gallons, and then your storm sewer is around eighty cents. Our current bill at five thousand would be fifty-six dollars for water, twenty-seven dollars for sewer, and two dollars and fifty cents for storm water. The new bill at the same rate, so the total on that would be eighty-six eighty-one for five thousand gallons. At the new rates, water goes up to seventy-two dollars. Sewer remains the same, so we're not increasing sewer, and storm sewer remains the same. So the bill goes from eighty-six eighty-one to one oh two fourteen, so approximately a fourteen dollar increase on five thousand gallons, which is the majority of where our residents are at. And then that last page is just the information, uh, about how the different cities charge, because some of them are by gallons, some are by cubic foot, some include garbage rates, so it just shows how everything got, got drawn out from the previous page.
How do we compare maintenance-wise and electric-wise for that volume?
Say that again.
You said you have a comparable, how does that compare to what our electric cost is of this particular utility? Of the operation total?
So this is just water sewer and storm sewer.
Obviously.
Right.
But there's electricity involved somewhere.
You have a choice.
Yeah, that just wraps into our expenses.
For the whole city, another, in another way?
We only have the one electric provider, we don't have a choice as to electric providers, so it costs.
One meter takes care of all city utility needs?
No, they're different.
Thank you. And that's located up in the corner?
I hear no more of the water.
There are three wells, two are in the same location, the other one is at a separate location. They're all supplied by power from the line, the rate is the same. There's no, we have absolutely no ability to affect any change on what we're paying for electricity.
Didn't think so, but I was just wondering what the cost of the electricity for the operation.
There's no need to break it out because we can't affect it. We can't ask Mid-American to provide his power, we can't ask RDC to provide his power because they have no infrastructure in this area.
I know if Ken and I were looking at our operation schedule and we seen each figure, we'd be looking at each one individually. If I'm asking, I apologize.
Well, I'm just saying, we don't have a choice. We don't have the ability to get power from anywhere else, so we pay the rate that we have.
I would put solar on my roof or thought about it or brought the question up.
Okay, that's a completely separate project. We're not gonna affect our water rates with the possible project of adding solar or building a wind tower. That's not the, that's not the point of this item that is on our agenda for tonight's discussion.
We've consistently.
It's about a rate increase and we're, as people that are involved, we're trying to figure out why.
Okay, we have to cover a short come right now.
So we've consistently, over the last six years, we've not raised rates, and we've seen increases in the cost of testing, the cost of chemicals. Uh, our labor has gone up, insurance, all of those things. As you know, a general cost of living increases three percent year over year, um, for, for those types of services, and we've not made that adjustment in six years.
Okay.
As far as our power's concerned, we get the same essentials that need water, they're all on I E.
Okay.
So, I haven't answered questions, it's just the, the electricity is not something that we're looking to put any alternative solution in at this point. Any other questions on the sheet? It's a lot of information. Again, we're happy to make it available. Counselor Trump put a lot of work into all the comparisons to show where we're at. So, oh, what I forgot to mention, so the current average cost crossed Center Point, Central City, Coggin, Springville, Walker, and ourselves is, would be a hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-three cents for five thousand gallons, and again, at our new rate, we're going to be at a hundred and two, so. At that usage level, so we would still be below average for the area, trying to be mindful that we're not.
Never looked mindful, but what is the minimum gallon each, that you charge for?
The base rate is up to a thousand.
Okay, that's how I can remember, either thousand or fifteen hundred or whatever.
Yeah, so we spread some of the increase to the base rate and others to the additional consumption.
Yep.
So that those higher users are paying for their consumption versus putting it all on the, cause generally your lower users, the ones that are within the base rate, odds are single person, possibly elderly, limited income, so we're mindful to spread that out across usage.
Yep.
Any other questions on water rate stuff? All right. With that, we will move to item number nine, which is the first reading of the amendment to the water rate ordinance. This, as Guy mentioned, is in the back of your packet, since we moved it out of old business. So there are two changes of note, um, so in section two, the rates for service will increase the minimum rate for the first one thousand gallons to forty-four dollars, and the usage over one thousand gallons, uh, at six dollars per thousand. And then we have section three, I believe is a brand-new section, the annual rate review that gives council the authority to review rates annually and increase up to, but no more than five percent should we see, again, that our expenses are exceeding our revenues, plus the ten percent. With any ordinance change, um, we can do up to three readings, or it can be at council's discretion if we do a first reading and waive the other two, do two readings and then waive the third, or do all three readings. We do currently, right now, have an August first effective date, which would mean we would do the first reading tonight, do a second reading at our July meeting and waive the third in order for this to go into effect on August first. So that's, that was an assumption that the clerk and I made in pulling this together, but again, at council discretion, if you wanted to, uh, do all three readings, or if we wanted to surpass anything, I feel like something like this that impacts everyone, we should do it with a minimum of two readings, uh, just so we know the information is available.
You wanna actually read the ordinance? But there's no motion at this point, right? Because you're not actually putting the ordinance into play?
I think they motioned to accept the first reading.
Okay, all right. And that should be by roll call.
Cause then we would generally do a second motion to waive the other readings, so.
Okay.
You have it in front of you, I don't know if I need to read it out loud, unless you feel like I need to.
Um, if you want to read it just for everyone, that might be a good idea.
Okay, I'm happy to. So section one is that section six dash fifty-six dash thirty-two of the code of ordinances of the city of Albertine Iowa is repealed and the following adopted and leave thereof. Water rates for service, water service shall be furnished at the following monthly rates within the city. The minimum rate, the first one thousand gallons at forty-four dollars, usage over one thousand gallons per thousand will be an additional six dollars. Annual rate review, where in the judgment of the city council, conditions exist to the extent that the water rates provided in section two are determined to be insufficient to cover budgeted obligations, the council shall retain the right to review such rates annually and increase up to, but by no more than five percent annually. This ordinance shall be in effect August first, twenty twenty-two, upon its passage and publication pursuant to Iowa Code three thirty-one dot three oh two subsection eight and thereafter. If any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional, such injunction shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole, or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. With that, I would seek a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one. Moved by Myers. Seconded by Schontz. Any further discussion on this item? I will ask for a roll call.
Counselor Bozenberg.
Yeah.
Counselor Schontz.
Yes.
Counselor West.
Aye.
Counselor Myers.
Aye.
Unless I hear otherwise, right now, um, I will say that we will do the second reading at our July meeting. Unless anyone is opposed to the second reading. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we move on to citizen comments. So we have two types of comments in the city of Albertine, those for agenda-related and non-agenda-related items. If you're on the agenda, uh, you'll speak at that time. You're more than welcome to still discuss your agenda item, but we will recognize you at that time. Uh, we ask that you state your name, address, and, um, we will limit to five minutes for comments. So are there any citizen comments related to agenda items? Hearing none, non-agenda-related items. Hearing none, non-agenda-related items. All right. Written reports, and we'll recognize Chief Graham.
Um, I really got nothing to add, do you want to put them in the report?
I can add. They came to service the Cascade yesterday. That service light was on, it's been taken care of. And I authorized with them just to come back and do a yearly service, you guys aren't going to put enough hours on it to hit the hour service mark. So he's just going to put it on schedule to come back probably every June to service the year, so.
Any questions for the chief? I see you're not about rental agreement, I will take care of that.
I just haven't been able to figure it out yet, nothing says about the fire department working out there.
Yes. It's good, we'll get that out of there.
Root catch.
Any questions for the chief? Yes, sir.
The road that goes in front of the fire station. We're at fifty-five to twenty-five. Will the stretch ever be made to change that?
They were actually working with the county to.
Yeah, we have a approval right now, we're going to add a forty mile an hour buffer.
Nice.
Yep, the fifty-five will get pushed back and we'll add a forty, so we were just waiting on signs.
Are we paying for the sheriff to sit there?
So we pay a set amount every month, we pay for forty-three hours at a set rate. If they are here for fifty hours, we only pay for forty-three, so we appreciate all the time that they're in town. Because it doesn't cost us any additional. They're required to meet their forty-three hours in town.
And they use the station quit off with the bathroom and like.
That's cool. How many tickets are there written?
Doesn't come back to us anyway, so.
So we don't even know?
Well.
We get the report.
We get the report, but we don't know if the ticket's issued or not, it just says handled by officer.
There've been a lot of people pulled over there, but I don't know. They got tickets.
And they're aware of this being changed as well, so that should hopefully, now the weather has cleared and only took nine months for the weather to clear. And I believe we have the signs on hand.
If you're farming and you have any kind of equipment, that's just a weird setup with trailers behind you to be.
It's in the works, it's just next time.
Yep. All right. Thanks Steve, appreciate it. Public Works.
I don't think I have anything to add, if you have any questions, I do want to thank Counselor Bozenberg, he is a scrapper. He took apart all of the water meters that have been removed from houses so far and got them into raw state to be turned in for salvage, that was awesome. That was going to have to be a, when we have time project now, it's, it's going to be done almost as soon as it's over, so.
Just wait for the rest, I'm going to sell it.
Yep.
Any idea?
We're going to check on lithium batteries. I'm going to take it to them tomorrow and see what I have to do for the lithium batteries if we have to. Need a charge to dispose them, but I don't know yet, so, no, we have to recycle it, so.
Don't put them together. Like separate them.
Yeah, but they're in a plastic.
Because I've worked with them, they're little black bags, so you can ship them off.
These are all encased in a, I should have brought it today, I didn't do it, but they're all, they got like clear. Resin or something.
Plastic around it.
And it's like.
It's like a D cell battery wrapped in, in a plastic container.
Yeah, it's pretty thick.
If you put them together, it'll catch fire.
Yeah.
There are a lot of fires, those are bad.
What do you know about fires?
You worked there, I don't, I didn't know, and recycle, maybe you can, I should have brought it, I didn't do it, but it's in a, they're in a housing.
Oh, he knows, he, he worked on them.
Yeah, they're in that housing, can we leave them in that and bring them into here? Or do we have to take them out of that housing?
Let me ask.
That's why I thought I'd stop there tomorrow and bring one and find out. How to, what to do with it. That's a, that's a question we have.
Guy in charge of it, keep them cool.
Oh, really?
Oh, that's over. Okay.
Go and recycle the seven rate. Talk to him about that, okay. There's a pretty pile of grass there, so.
We're under forty meters to install at this point, so.
And is that? Third letter going out, is that final notice or?
The final notice, I actually had Jim post notices on doors, he actually knocked on doors today, and if anyone answered, he kind of urged them to get scheduled. And then if they didn't answer, he posted basically a statement saying, if you don't give your meter replaced, don't get scheduled within the next three days, we'll shut your water off. That's what it boils down to, so.
Because Ferguson will be, we're.
They're running out of days to be able to do this, they can't just keep coming back to town for two meters or three meters. And I assume there'll be half a dozen, a dozen that I have to take care of after the fact, possibly, but that's fine, that's a manageable number for me to have to do. But the big push is to try and, he's going to be in town Tuesday and Wednesday next week. And so the hope is to have the vast majority of those forty scheduled for Tuesday and Wednesday, and then be done, so.
Any questions for Guy?
No, that only takes like five minutes, I mean, they're in an hour, so it's not. Yeah, they showed up five minutes early for me.
I was surprised, I thought, forgot something. Says, no, we're good.
Yeah.
All right, and then we have City Hall, you don't actually have a written report for City Hall, it's Danielle's fault. But I just, we left it on here, A, as a placeholder, but I just wanted to follow up, so we are still working on recodification. We've gone through all of the comments from the contract firm, and now I need to go through and read it for cohesiveness. Because I know there were a few things that referenced themselves in circles, and so we're just looking for those types of things. So I will read through all one thousand two hundred pages, if anyone else wants to join, they're more than welcome. And then finalizing the list of nuisance that we started, so just buttoning those up and, and closing those out. That is the City Hall update. All right, any questions for myself or Guy on City Hall? Item number twelve is the approval of the consent agenda, we do have one additional bill, is that correct?
Yes, we just got it today, it's from Foster Kraus. The air conditioner at the fire station was not working with two upcoming events that we had the meeting room rented out for. We could not get Bergen, who installed the system, to get there in time, so I made some calls and Foster's came. Uh, and the system was completely empty of, of Freon, so, and Freon is not cheap anymore. Five hundred and ninety-nine dollars for Foster Kraus to refill the Freon in the air conditioner at the.
Do they pass the warranty on that thing?
No, not necessarily, but Bergen came the next week and leak checked it and could not find a leak. But we, we, even if there's warranty, we have to pay Foster's because they're not part of it. So I, that's yet to be worked out, basically, we're going to check it again after we are well into cooling season and see if it's got the appropriate amount of.
Did it ever work?
Oh, it did, it, last summer it worked fine.
They have it, they had it insulated too, so they did get it insulated.
Yeah, and all that ductwork is insulated, we've got one door to be worked on, and then need to follow up on this. And there's a little bit more weather stripping for doors that they're still checking on.
Garage door windows?
And the garage door windows, but that's just waiting for product to arrive, so, yeah. Pretty close to better than that.
I look for approval of the consent agenda with the one additional bill to Foster's for five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Moved by Schontz. Second by West, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay, motion carries. All right, that moves us into new business. Item thirteen A, the city clerk treasurer hiring approval, I've got wonderful news. So just want to give a hiring update, the committee conducted six interviews over the course of a couple of weeks. And we came across with unanimous approval to make an offer to one of those candidates. If you'll recall, at our last special meeting, I was given approval to make that offer within a certain range. And I'm excited to say Mr. Christopher Shelby, who is with us tonight, did accept an offer contingent upon council's approval tonight. So that offer is a salary of twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. So that was Danielle's most recent wage, so we'll see no change to salary. No insurance coverage will be needed at this time. And then we did negotiate to include sixty hours of vacation for previously planned events that he's got on his calendar. So our policy right now is there's a twelve-month waiting period before any vacation time is allotted, so that would be the one exception within this offer. He has completed the drug screen and background check with flying colors, and we anticipate a start date of, get this, tomorrow, if you all approve tonight, so.
Wait tomorrow midnight, ready?
Yeah. Twelve oh one A. So you do have his application and resume and cover letter in your packet. Which you can learn a little bit more about Mr. Shelby, but it was a pleasure talking with him, and we're excited to have him on board, and if council approves, so. I'll entertain any questions.
I have one question from you. The state rules are different than anybody else. And in order, they have sessions that you can go to class to learn different items that they're talking about. And I would recommend any budget classes that you could go to. You need to go to, go to any of them, I think it's, what is it, a three-year period?
Yep.
To become a certified clerk. And I would, I would like to see you go for that.
Yeah, and just so the council knows, I love to learn, I will definitely be signing up for those, and as well as anything else that I can help out to help the city, so, I'm all in. Working it.
Those, I think those are important, you go to the.
Appreciate it, thank you.
There are no further questions or discussion, I would seek council approval of the offer as stated for Christopher Shelby to be hired as our city clerk and treasurer. Again, at a salary of twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, no insurance coverage, sixty hours of vacation starting on June tenth. Moved by Myers, second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. My condolences, congratulations.
He was earlier, here earlier today and came back tonight, so we've got him hooked, we know we do.
Connie didn't scare you off, that's what I feel. All right, next item on the agenda is the resolution for FY twenty-three employee wages. Let me dig this out. Danielle came in here and shuffled my packet all up. All right. So we have just the two on here, oh, because we just approved the wage for Mr. Shelby, so we've got our public works director, Guy Trimble, and our maintenance worker, Jim. I don't know how to pronounce this.
Oliverio.
Oliverio, thank you. Current wage. So for public works director, he is currently at twenty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. So on our pay scale, if you have that in front of you, that is grade ten, step five. During our budget meetings, we did approve a two-step increase this year because of the inflation and frankly, just the cost to hire and the cost to retain employees with the current environment. So within budget would be the twenty-seven twelve. That is. What the council chooses to do. And then for Jim, I don't recall if we budgeted an increase or not, but I will tell you, he's doing a fantastic job, going above and beyond. Helped cover, while we only had Guy in the office for a week, probably felt like the longest week of his life, and it's not over yet. You know, Jim's been essential to help cover, he's capable and able to do anything that we ask, run any machinery, those types of things, so. I would recommend we give at least a one-step increase, I don't, when did we hire?
Oh, man, that was. Firstly here, February.
Sounds about right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He had just come on board for your vacation, because he wasn't ready to pull himself, so at least December.
Yeah, right, right.
What scale is he at?
So he's, oh, I'm, I'll go, he's at grade seven, step three, which is the seventeen eighty-nine. So if we did a one-step increase, that would be eighteen forty-five. So generally, the steps are about every two years, but again, with the current climate, and he's been, now he's trained, and he's been doing a fantastic job. I would say that at least a one-step would be, would be recommended. Again, that is the pleasure of the councils. I'm looking for a motion.
Are we waiting for somebody to question?
I think we're, we're ready for our motion.
I'll make a motion that way. Here they pay increases. Guy Trimble at twenty-seven twelve. And for Jim, Oliverio. To eighteen forty-five.
Motion by Schontz.
Second.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? Can we roll call on resolutions, it's on the bottom here, so I'm going to ask for a roll call since this is money-related.
Not a problem, Counselor Bozenberg.
Yes.
Counsel Schontz.
Yes.
Counsel West.
Yes.
Counsel Myers.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thirteen C, extension of stormwater culvert at Second Street and South Main Avenue, I will recognize Public Works. Do we have a quote, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a quote from Handley Dirtwork in there. The, our stormwater crosses Main Avenue near that property, this is all driven by, a gentleman has purchased the lots formerly owned by the, the neighbor family. Um, that are vacant, his intention is to build a, it'll be a Morton building, but I've visited with the Morton rep, he's, he's intending to build a, quite a nice. Really good-looking structure to be a repair shop. He specializes in diesel, but he recognized that Albernet really doesn't have a repair shop, so he intends to do some oil changes and tire repair and that sort of thing as well. And so he has purchased that property that's right next to our right-of-way, which would be the extent, extension of Second Street if you went off of Second Street to the east. And so that's at this point an open ditch, the storm sewer crosses under the road and then empties out into an open ditch and flows down towards the pasture that's east of town. And so he, in an effort, and every conversation we've had, is, it's mostly about trying to make the place look nice, so that's a welcome thought process. He was wondering if we could do something about that stormwater ditch, because it can't be mowed regularly, it's obviously wet a lot of the time. And we happen to have culverts from previous projects, we've taken out eighteen-inch dual-well plastic culverts that we've got stockpiled that are doing nothing. So this quote includes using our existing eighteen-inch culvert sections to more or less. Contain that stormwater ditch all the way to the property line on the east edge at the end of our right-of-way. And that then, of course, would continue to service our stormwater, but yet provide a, a more attractive, less hazardous area if he's going to have a business operating right there. So, and the quote was for thirty-six hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents, and Jeremy told me he could start relatively soon. Sounds like, uh, Mr. Valka might be ready. Sounds like Mr. Valka might be ready, Morton might be ready to set post for the building in July already. So he would love to see it done if we're going to do it before then, and I think we can facilitate that. It's something that's been on my list for a long time because we wind up expending resources to clean that ditch. It silt in, water starts backing up, we gotta go in with an excavator, haul out the silt, so.
My question to you, you and I have had this discussion, this is work we could do ourselves.
It is possible for us to do it ourselves, yes. We could rent an excavator and get it done. Current environment, I got the quote because just don't know how long I'm going to be tied up.
I just wanted to put all options on the table, so, yeah, it comes down to, you know, the value of Guy's time and other projects that we have in the works. If we want Mr. Hanley to handle it for us, you will note on his quote, it does say that we will supply the pipe material. So this quote is already factoring in that we have those culverts on hand.
I question this. This business that's involved changing oil and such. Is the design of what the runoff is, will he be able to wash his front drive? And then that goes in the culvert and does that go down to the creek that waters my cows? Is that how this is going?
So this is our existing storm sewer. It's open air right now. We're just going to put the culvert in place as far as him.
Is it going to go to my place then?
We could have a conversation about livestock and city limits at this point if you would like to.
Sure.
That's not allowed.
I believe that was grandfathered in.
No, I don't believe so. But this would be, this would prevent oil from reaching the creek. We're talking an open ditch right now. We're, we're replacing the open ditch with culvert sections.
It will just allow them to grate over it.
So it can be grained over.
So even today, let's hypothetically, if you were to wash oil into the street, it's still going to go into this ditch. It would just then sit in the ditch. Now we're going to cover it so they can grate over it and mow and maintain the property versus having weeds and, and wet swampy that we have today.
I'm sorry I'm asking questions about painting and oil and things like this going into water supplies, but for some reason, I feel like it's a concern.
No, you're fine. Thanks.
He has to follow any rule that any repair shop would have to follow.
You can't have oil into, you can't have oil into a sewer anywhere.
I do have one question. What is that zone?
Business.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know since it was a residence that got pulled out, so.
Zone you have to do there.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you. That little orange spot, right?
Yeah, that little orange spot. Right, where it arrows at?
That was serious business, them horseshoes.
Yeah, it was. Candy.
Pleasure of the council on hiring Hanley Dirtwork to install the culvert at the intersection, essentially the intersection of Second Street and South Main Avenue.
Is that eighteen inches? Is that big enough?
Yeah, it's actually bigger than what's going under the street, so.
Excellent.
But we have it, so why not use it?
Why not use it?
And he's telling us too that getting pipe like that might be extremely difficult with the current supply chain problems. So if we were to put new in, you know, and that would probably triple the cost of this quote. For example, roughly, if we had to buy the new pipe, there's over a hundred feet of it, so.
Will this, will this leave any leftover after this project of what we have?
Like one short piece, yeah, yeah.
Would he want to take that off the payment?
Well, that I would like to keep just in case you get into a scenario, you know. But when there's six pieces of, of perfectly good pipe, and I have absolutely no vision of how we're ever going to use it, it seems like this is the ultimate way to, to make it, turn it into good use and really use that, that product, so.
With the state and everything that's going on right now, if we want to get it done, if we want to start putting posts in there.
Say the magic words.
Yeah, I will make a motion to go ahead and hire Hanley Dirtworks to put in the storm, storm range ditch trial for three thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
Motion by Bozenberg?
Second.
Second by West. Any further discussion?
We probably should do it just to be a good neighbor. If he wants to play with the ice, we need to.
It's our resumen, so it's our responsibility.
It is nice to see a commercial building come.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, special event permit requests for Mike Gibbons. Oh, I do have to note one other correction to the agenda. We had your first event on June seventh, which was two days ago.
That's my fault.
Um, I believe it's probably July seventh. On the agenda, it's noted as June seventh.
July sixteenth is the first event. Wow, I really, I really screamed. Well, whoever wrote it on that bike, I really screamed.
Say, this year?
We got the year.
July sixteenth for the first one. All right, the floor is yours, Mr. Gibbons.
July sixteenth will be what I consider my grand opening for Gibby's Place, the new bar that is in town that recently took over from the clinic and our past presence from Mikes and so forth, Bobs. We just plan on having a little get-together, just closing this side street right here on front of City Council广场. I will put a fence up to allow vehicles to pass to and from their back parking lot above for the apartment complex through the alleyway behind my bar. I'm only asking for about eight hours from about three PM to about eleven PM just because we don't want to move, have any outside loud noises after that. We'll move it into the bar, probably right after nine PM or ten PM, we'll move it into the bar. I am getting an outside liquor license, a day liquor license for that. And I consulted my insurance company and they said since it's just that part there, I do not have to add an additional business. My current business insurance will cover it. That's July sixteen.
Any questions on the request for July sixteenth? Gibby's grand opening.
Do you want to do them separately?
I do want to do them separately, yes.
I'll make a motion that Gibby related and has a grand opening.
Motion by Shants. Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. The second request is for, make sure we got this one right, Saturday, August sixth.
Saturday, August sixth, used to be an benefit day with Alvernette. I've lived in Alvernette since two thousand and four. And every first weekend in August, we do something called Children's Benefit Days here. Up until last year, it was downtown and the population of Alvernette, the city of Alvernette, the high school reunions of Alvernette, all enjoyed coming downtown to reminisce about old times, have pleasant conversations. Last year, it was moved up to the ACDC Ball Diamond. And since I purchased Gibby's Place, I would like to include the downtown vicinity again within that arrangement. I'm not even want to close it all day. The same closing times would be just like my open house, which would be like an afternoon on Saturday till the evening, early evening time, nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night. It won't run to two AM just because I don't want to have the streets open that late. So what I'm asking for is I'll provide port of parties, security, additional business insurance for street closure for about eight to ten hours on Saturday. I am also a current member of the ACDC Diamond. I joined last week. So that way, if there was any conflicts, we could discuss them. If it's not brought up, I've talked to many members already this week about it. So I would just like to ask for you guys' permission to do it and go from there.
So this one does include a map. It looks like the closure is a little bit more extended.
It's just first to second. That's it. So it's not, not like before where the whole town was shut down.
Do you know if anybody, any other businesses is going to participate?
Nancy has approached me and she would like to, yes. So we are working together on this too.
Question for you, because there are still, I, I just want to be super clear. There are still benefit day activities planned that day. The majority of them will be at the Diamond Club, but they are still having the parade. So that means road closure essentially near the same place for the morning and then you having to go back out and close again. Any concerns?
No, because generally, and I need to speak with this Diamond Club because a lot of people are different, but generally for the parade, we haven't actually set up barricades. It's been bodies, people, vehicles blocking the road since it's only an hour event. So this shouldn't be a problem. And quite honestly, it's a less of a load than in years past because I'm probably only going to have to drop off four barricades to get this taken care of versus all eight.
And like previous years, we would go out there and you drop off, we put them in place, noon, midnight, clean up. It's like previous years.
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't, that part should not be a problem to me at all. And I should tell you, I checked the clerk's email when I got here tonight and Justin from the Diamond Club basically sent an email saying, you know, we have no problem with Mike doing his event. We are not connected. He, he just said, I want to be clear, we're not connected in any way, but that the Diamond Club doesn't have any problem with Mike doing, requesting this. It's just, there's no connection. His only hope is that it's not perceived as being the benefit day.
No, in fact, I didn't even put that down on my request. I said the street dance. To that way, there would be strictly avoidance of that. And just like in the past, I've donated many of thousands of dollars to the Diamond Club and this year I'll do the same.
So that, that came, that email came in at six oh six tonight, according to the, to the email server, so.
I do, again, probably Danielle's fault. I think I'm missing a page of the application.
That's probably definitely my.
It may be, hang on, give me one second. It might be jumbled with this one. Oh, they're both here. They're just on the word. Street dance, got it.
They just gave me a raise. I hope I.
They're going to fire you.
Yeah, they're going to fire me.
Here.
That's how you gotta remove one hat from your.
So that was three to eleven, so the same time frame.
Yep. And in no way do I want to impede on lefties. Just like before, we, we're, everybody worked together this time.
We appreciate our businesses and that they bring people to town and that they have events like these. I appreciate the partnership with the Diamond Club. I also want to tout that for benefit day, they're doing some, some new things. They're trying some new things. They're having a family movie night in lieu of the band. So that opens that for Mr. Gibbons to offer that on Main Street for the, the crew that maybe doesn't want to go watch a movie. So it's nice to have options. Are there any other questions, concerns, discussion? If not, I would seek a motion to approve the special event request on August sixth for Mr. Mike Gibbons to close Main Street from three to eleven PM.
So moved.
Moved by West?
Second.
Second by Myers? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Appreciate you coming in. Okay. Item thirteen E, resolution to name the official depository. So this is something we thought that was normally done in January. And actually, the number on this didn't get updated. Do I have a number or do I just get to make one up?
Yours isn't? Oh, the, oh, yeah, it would be the one that follows the wage increase, so.
Twenty twenty-two.
Should just be zero two then.
Yeah, zero.
Zero six. All right, I'll read that off. All right, so this is where we name our official depository, which is currently Farmer State Bank. Again, we generally do this in January, but it's something we want to get done before the next budget, which is very, very soon. Previously, so for the twenty twenty-one resolution, remind me, Guy, we were at one point seven five for the maximum deposit. Our current balance exceeds that. And so as much as this council needs to have discussions on how to spend that balance now and start accomplishing some projects, which I know we've, we're in the planning phase and we have several things going on. The city doesn't need to be holding that much money. We currently do have that. So while we're in the motions of this, we should also increase our maximum deposit just so we're in compliance with our, our resolution for the depository so that you will see it reflected there as two point two five million. I think we're at one point nine right now, again, with intentions to start spending some of that down.
How did we come to the two point two five?
Just the fact. Where I pull from, but. Just the fact that we're at one point nine and they're, you know, honestly, we're going to be down in the one point sevens again as soon as we pay these bills because there's loan payments and et cetera. But if we, even if we design a project, figure it out, know what we're doing and we're going to spend three hundred thousand dollars, by the time we get to spend three hundred thousand dollars, we may have our next blast of property tax income come in. So then we push our, our bank balance back up while we're waiting for the project to be completed to spend the money on. So we decided we probably better give ourselves some cushion.
I'm going, I'm going to move your checking account out.
There's a, you, you can get rid of those cowbells there.
So the intention will be we'll get back on schedule this coming January, do this again so we can reassess that maximum deposit at that time as well. But for now, we'll just cover that.
In March.
Yes. If there are no questions, I would look for motion to approve resolution oh six dash twenty twenty-two dash two. Nameing of the depository for Farmer State Bank with a maximum deposit of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Moved by Shants. Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, thirteen G, approve the TIF payment to Naylor Estates. This is not part of the claims because I'm just going to be frank, the check's already been written. So our contract with Naylor Estates for TIF was that they get paid on June first and December first. This should have been on last month's claims and it was missed. So it's a set amount, much like any of our loan payments. So I authorized Danielle to go ahead and make the payment and then put it on here as a separate approval. So that is why you are seeing this. And you can see the payment schedule there. Payment number one, we've made on December first of twenty twenty-one, and this is payment number two. If there are no questions, I would just seek approval for the TIF payment to Naylor Estates in the amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents per the payment schedule.
Things that are signed, the check are better approved than here.
Motion by Shants.
Second.
Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thirteen H, discuss ordinance violation two thirty-nine North Main Avenue. So we do have, this is a preemptive discussion. We do have junk vehicle nuisance statements out to this particular property owner as well as other junk that has accumulated. So I was looking for discussion across council, potential action. We do have one more notice to send. But the options that have been presented to me are we can go and abate the property, which we have done before, in which case the property owner is responsible for any expenses incurred. Or we can pursue more of like a municipal infraction, which would then gain us a judgment from the courts such that this property owner would sign off that they would never violate this ordinance again, in which case we wouldn't have to go through all the rigmarole of sending them notices and those types of things. We could just go straight to abatement if it ever happens again. I can see going either way.
Has this ever been a property that has come up previously?
Multiple times. This property was recently cleaned up, probably within the last year and a half, two years.
Yeah, I'd say two years. I always, I mean, it was done a dozen years ago. I always, and it was done a dozen years ago.
It doesn't guarantee that they're not going to violate. It just then, we don't have to send all the letters and offer the hearing and, and all of that, but it, but we would have.
It would be a more efficient process. So it's not like if, but when it happened to.
Yep, we would have to increase legal costs upfront. Because a lawyer would have to file that for us.
I would like to add, the property owner did catch me this afternoon and he wanted to tell me that he had a whole list of reasons, but that he and his daughter would start working on the property soon. We've heard that before on so many occasions, I cannot count. So I just took his information. He said he probably wouldn't be able to come tonight. But he wanted to let me know that they would be working on it soon after they got this, 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 and this done. So, take that for what it's worth, especially the people that are familiar with this property that have, have what, the validity of that statement, I guess, so.
Mr. Small, welcome.
Well.
We just got your update from, from Guy, so.
Yep.
So you've got, I guess, basically the council, we were, I was just telling them, you've got some things that your daughter's doing.
Yeah.
And then when she's done, she's planning on helping you.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, any other questions or?
Just wondering if you've got any kind of timeline. You know, we're always gonna ask that question.
A what?
A timeline.
Oh, a timeline.
Yep.
Well, I, I guess maybe it depends on the weather because I want to put covers on those stories first. And with all the wind blowing, it's kinda hard to do it, so it's kinda calmed down in that, you know, the last few days, so we're gonna tack that first.
What do you think the wind will die down in the next thirty days?
Hasn't yet.
That's true.
Yeah, I believe, I can pull it out here, I believe, you've received second notice, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So third notice would generally be the, where we set the timeframe. Just looking if council would prefer to go to third notice with the potential to abate or, uh, like me to reach out to the lawyer for the municipal infraction and the judgment going forward. Heard from Mr. Myers.
Unfortunately, I probably have to go with this. We've had this for so many times, it keeps coming up.
Getting the judgment on it, okay. I'd see, are there any motion on that action, just to consult with the lawyer?
I am not positive, so probably the safe thing to do would be to have a motion.
Get that authorization.
Yeah.
Personally, I would seek a motion, uh, for me to reach out to our legal counsel regarding the ordinance violation at two thirty-nine North Main Avenue and the potential for a municipal infraction with the judgment going forward that the violation will not continue.
Silver.
Moved by Myers. Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Thirteen I, renewal of lefties tobacco permits. Nothing to note here. Business as usual.
Business as usual.
Perfect.
I'm glad my daughter's right on top of that because I.
I have good people.
I'll make a motion that we renew lefties.
Motion by Bozenberg. Second by Shance. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, sir. Thirteen J, stacks getting smaller. Fire department equipment request. Steve, we've got two here.
The hose one was approved in February.
Is that sandry or?
The other one.
This one?
Yeah. My assistant chief was supposed to order, never did, price has gone up. So we're back here, it's one again. Nope.
So that is for eight one hundred foot hoses for a total of seven thousand five hundred and ninety-two dollars. We have verified that there is money in the fire department equipment fund.
Well, if we want to deplete their fund, we should ask for an invoice and pay it. But he's saying ten weeks possibly before you can get it, is what.
I.
Cam told me that, yes.
Okay.
Assistant chief told me.
I don't know.
Could be ten weeks before we see the hose, but if we want to deplete, because the fire department budget is a lot smaller next year than it was this year because we're done buying big ticket items, bunker gear, et cetera, et cetera. So, if we could pay for it in this fiscal year, that's probably wise because they have the funds in their account.
Does this get us up to date on everything and, is this?
No.
Just back start or is it?
Get us closer.
This is the big five inch supply hose.
Yeah.
But that doesn't go on truck, does that go on?
That's where you go on one thirty-six, then one thirty-six.
Can you get an invoice? We have to have that.
Yeah, no, and that's, that's fine. I, I, we talked about that. If, if you guys approve, we'll get an invoice in order to get it paid before the end of the fiscal year.
So similarly, there's a second request, it's gonna be in the same boat, for sandry fire supplying, and this is for mask and hose for.
It's a, we have rip pack, so if you. Like, if you have a house fire, this team sits aside and they go in, if you run up air in your tank, they can connect to your air pack. Well, with our new air packs, we needed this hose and regulator for our mask. And when I ordered the tank, I didn't realize.
That's a, that separate tank that was outdated.
Yep.
Yes.
The tank we got, we just can't use it till I get the service.
Yeah, okay, because you know, it changed.
So that is at a price of one thousand twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Similarly, we're hoping to get this paid this fiscal year.
Again, the money is there and the budget is smaller than that here, so the prudent thing would be to.
Get an invoice for this one too.
So with that, I would seek a motion to approve the E M Feldt quote for seven thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars and the sandry fire supply for one thousand twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Moved by Bozenberg.
Second.
Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries. Alright, on to old business. Um, fourteen B, the hearing for ordinance violation at four ten South Main Avenue. So with that, we will recognize Mr. Gill.
I would like a hundred and twenty days to complete the tear down of the house located at, that address. I'm quite sure it will be done prior to that. I've already went and entered into a, uh, contract with, uh, Jeremy Hadley.
We appreciate that. Any other questions? I would make a motion because we have sent notice and I believe, I don't know what, I can look it up, I don't know what timeline we put on it, but, um, for a complete house tear down, I think a hundred and twenty days is more than.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the, uh, the week, extend it to a hundred and twenty days from today.
Motion by Bozenberg.
Sir.
Second by Myers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Um, with that, I will say we understand that things happen, you know, it gets to know next week, you just never know. So if you do need more time, just please come back to us and let us know. Um, I know Jeremy, his work can be unpredictable sometimes.
Yeah, I got a letter during planting season and it just kinda hit me the wrong, wrong way.
No, but we're reasonable people, we just.
But, uh.
Like to have a conversation.
Yeah, somebody got something to say, don't, don't, don't send a letter, just have somebody in town call me or.
Well, we're required to, so that's, that's the process we must follow.
I would like to invite everyone to walk down my lane and look at both sides. So that you know exactly how I feel about the property. I don't need to say anything to you. You walk down there, you'll see what I see. And you'll know what I probably would like to do, alright? But I invite you.
Appreciate that.
I think it's a beautiful piece of property, but I have my concerns. Earlier I mentioned, that's, that's why I'd like to see you down there. Anyway, Jeremy's gonna start cleaning things up there and, uh, I've made a big, a big movement cleaning all those buildings out and I've tried to give away as much to people that could use it and needed it. All the primitive items are now in Oxford Junction, Iowa, it's primitive store for sale, so I've tried to redo it and, uh, recycle as much as possible like you are doing, and I congratulate you, by the way, for that. So, um, that's kinda where we're at with that.
You inherited a bunch of stuff.
But you know.
Treasures, they're called treasures.
Treasures, yes.
But you know what, I, I can take the land around town as treasure and I think we can do things. Maybe have some parking for you come the sixth too.
Alright. With that, we're on to fourteen C, uh, hearing regarding ordinance violation at two two six North Main Avenue, uh, which we also have our homeowner, so.
Well, all I can tell you is that, uh, the water going out to my garage supplies a toilet and a sink. It's metered, uh, through the house. Steve Graham dug it in for me twenty years ago, I guess. Kent did all the city work at the time when we built the building, so I think he kinda knew what was going on too. Bob Barry was the inspector at the time and he's the one that came up and made sure we were doing everything we were supposed to, so. I, I guess, I followed all the directions I was given. So I certainly would like to not have to dig my yard up or, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So as long as I'm not, you know, adding anything to it or, you know, things like that, I, I'd like to leave it the way, I have a shut off. I mean, I can shut it off to go in out there in the house, but there's not one out at the street, so.
Uh, does anyone need the ordinance violation for the particular one? Are you aware of the?
Yeah, it's the water.
Yep, having a, having a separate tap on the main is what our ordinance calls for, so.
Do you know, was the ordinance in place twenty years ago?
It was, so we went back and looked, uh, and it was the same ordinance now. I will also be very frank in that the inspector at the time and any documentation would be difficult to find.
Oh, yeah, because I, I don't have anything left from back then.
We can't locate that. We did go through old meeting minutes to see if anything had come up. There were other, uh, decisions by council at that time that were similar, but we didn't see anything in particular to your property, so.
And I don't imagine any building permits or anything would have had that kind of, and you wouldn't have many.
We wouldn't have, we probably were, we weren't even with Robbins at that point. I didn't even live here at that point, but I'll look at that was.
At that, if I may speak.
Yes, you may.
Yeah, at that point in time, I was kinda new to the business or new to the city as far as doing the side job. I was mentoring with Bob Barry and at that time, yeah, we seen no problem with that since it wasn't additional, say, housing or anything like that. Wanted water in the garage. Um, and since during that time, there's been other houses that you got, that we've corrected, the trito place for the school, that was corrected. You know, uh, as far as going through the house feeding another house and stuff. And I know there is another garage that has same situation, but it's also on a separate lot too, so it would not affect it anyway that way. But, you know, I, I feel this case, I, we all know what's going on. I think you, you know, trying to help out, you know, the dog here in the interim. I, I think we, you know, uh, since it was established, you know, twenty years ago and that's all it's feeding it, you know, my opinion is, you know, leave it rest or, or, uh.
Yeah, I mean, if it makes any difference, there's no kitchen out there or anything like it, just a toilet and a sink is what it is, so.
I mean, they, I think you originally put that up there to, at that time during the band and all that stuff, so, but, uh, things change, I know, and that is a violation, but that's just what I know from what went on during that time. It just, uh, plain simple, want a toilet out in the garage.
I appreciate that, because like I said, it is hard for us to, to go back and find records.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, it's, it's a shame we can't find some of those, but.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
My one concern, because we've actually seen this with some of our water meter replacements, um, as much as, I know you're a trustworthy guy. Without the separate line, plumbing can be changed, so we have found some that had lines coming off pre-meter and we've really got no way of, of knowing.
Well, that's one thing Bob told us at the time. He said, when you tap into this, you know, make sure you get on the right side of the meter.
Yes, yep, I do remember that, that.
So, I mean, if nothing else, again, council, closure of the council, I would, I don't know if we need some kind of, again, not that I don't trust you, but if we can put it to bed with an inspection and just make sure that the water is metered, um, obviously. I don't, I don't want to set a precedent for any new construction. They must follow the ordinance, but this is a twenty-year-old building. The reason this came up is, you know, we had, you know, suspect that someone was living in there, but it got confirmed on a social media post and it drew our attention to the situation.
Oh, that's what brought it to your attention.
Yep.
I wondered about that.
It, it appears that your daughter is full-on living there and not knowing what there is for facilities. That, that actually is another ordinance violation that we didn't even bring up, was the fact that you can't have two residences on an R one lot. So if it is her place of residence.
I guess you can, you can call it her residence if you want. She sleeps there, that's.
Sure, see, and we, that's why I'm saying, Todd, we don't know the whole situation until we go through this process and we find out all these things and.
So what, let me ask you this, so on some of these other houses and stuff, they have a full-on kitchen and stuff in their basement and say they're helping out a family member and stuff?
Yeah, but it's the same building. It's the separate building thing.
But is that considered multi-dwelling then? You got two families upstairs, downstairs, is that?
No, because there's no separation between the two. You can go freely between the upstairs and the downstairs.
So if it's attached, you wouldn't have a problem?
Or, or total separate entrances and it's totally designed.
Right, right.
Right, yeah.
In the future, do you plan on putting our kitchen in and a bathroom?
Actually, the reason we put it out there to begin with, our kids were younger then. We really needed a place for the kids to, for activities in the wintertime and stuff. We had a pool table up there, you know, kids would come after school and go up there and play pool and whatnot and hang out and. Then when Celia, you know, went through everything she went through, she needed a place to live, obviously, and so we just kinda said, come on, stay with us, and she wanted to get a dog and the dog is not better off out there.
The dog enjoys it out there.
Oh, yeah, and I enjoy him much more out there too. But anyway, that's, that's all neither here nor there. We're no, we know what we're talking about, so.
Appreciate it. Um, except, any other questions from council? I mean, with just a sink and a stool, the usage is probably pretty limited. So the other thing with, with that, Todd, is with the two separate service lines, then that satisfies our minimum and any overages versus if you tie everyone together. So if you look at, say, an apartment building, if they were to tie them all together, the majority would then be an overage, which is not at the same rate as that, that base, but knowing that it's just a stool and a sink. I don't imagine it's, it's a huge usage, but.
I don't think as long as he's not gonna head on like having a kitchen or.
It's a separate subject.
No.
Shower, something like that. Well, you'd have to have an, you know, an inspection anyways, or, you know, building for that to do that, so. Pay it on, you know.
Oh, yeah.
For to.
In the future, you mean, yeah.
If you were to do anything.
We would, we would.
Yeah, that's, that, that's not my, my goal, no. I'd actually like to get all my kids' stuff out of there so I have a garage.
I know how you feel. I know how you feel.
Do you need us to shut the water off? Cause that would do it.
I can do that in my basement.
So it sounds like council is willing to uh, allow this to accept the situation as it is, again, given the.
As long as no changes are made.
As long as there are no changes, um, any stipulation on inspection to ensure that water's being, it's, it's post-meter.
Maybe you ought to have Guy go up and do a check on it.
That would take like thirty seconds.
Yeah, I can show you where the shut off is and where it's hooked in.
Yeah, that's fine.
If we can get a verification of that.
Yeah, it won't take long time.
I was saying Ferguson didn't in there already?
Oh yeah, he was, yeah.
Yeah, he might even have a picture of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you never know.
Just, just a thought.
Yeah.
So, in order to shore up the records for you, I'm gonna ask council for a motion to allow the property at two twenty-six North Main for their garage outbuilding to continue to use water service provided from the primary tap on the main that supplies the house. So that they've got, now got documentation that the council has reviewed the situation.
Okay, come back next year in the kitchen.
And, and then do I need to get something from you folks in writing that I can add to my paperwork?
This will be our motion and it'll be in our minutes and then all you'd have to hold on to, yes, our minutes.
It'll always be in the minutes, okay? Okay. I've never been involved in this upmarket stuff, so.
We'll get you shorted up.
Hi, Bill.
Motion by Myers. Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in and having a conversation with us.
I'm sorry it took so long, but with, with the job I have, it's so, this time of year we're crazy and we're shorthanded and I had to beg to get here tonight.
We appreciate it.
Actually, what I had to do was go in and tell my boss, I'm not going where you're asking me to go tomorrow. Cause I gotta be back in Albernette. And I'm training a new driver, so it was even more difficult.
Teaching the ropes and saying no.
She's a sixty-three year old lady who's decided she wants to be a truck driver. Hey, she's a nice gal, nice gal. But why at sixty-three? Go ahead and retire.
I don't know, I'm here too, so.
Well, you're a farmer.
We appreciate you coming in, Todd.
Thanks.
That brings us to the end of our agenda, so final discussion and comments. We'll start with Bozenberg.
Welcome aboard, Chris.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Charles? Mr. West?
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Thank you.
And now that we have two Chris's, we're just gonna start going by last names, just so you guys know?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I grew up on a block with four Chris's. I never knew my first name. My friends never called me by my first.
Didn't want to offend anybody, but that's my strategy.
Nope, that's fine.
Alright, with that, we are at item number sixteen, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by West.
Second.
Second by Bozenberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Alright, it's going.
Somebody sometime today started saying something about the guy down here that bought a piece of ground with the floodplain.
Dueling, yeah, he's.
What was it, cattle or horses or something came up in that conversation? What was that about?
Cattle, bovine. They escaped. They followed TJ's home.
I found them.
You found them?
Off my old cross.
Explained a bit. I, 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 I feel like I walked in late in the conversation.
So I was coming back from Mary, I'm picking up my kids. From Mary and Independent and I was coming up the road. And then there's like two things sitting in the, or something sitting in the ditch on this side of the vet side. Off my old cross and started slowing down and two heifers sitting there. Having a good time. They jumped up and ran across the road and was running around over there and then came running back over and was running back and forth out in the field there. I just kind of drove my truck and kind of kept pushing them between the uh, the body shop apartments and the vet until Ed showed up. Uh, CJ, DJ?
DJ?
I think.
Something, I don't know.
I'm like, he's the one that owns them, but Ed was.
DJ Nuzel? That, yeah.
DJ?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Ed was borrowing them to eat down the grass.
They'll lead to be a Ford, we cannot do that.
Oh, he had bovine and lawnmowers?
Um, seven younger ones and a big freaking bull.
A bull?
Yeah. No horns.
Oh, anyway.
Yeah, somehow they jumped out from somewhere and.
They crawled under, come on.
Oh yeah. He said, there was, so you got the bottom, uh.
Bottom wire?
Bottom wire and then the second one. The second one was smashed down.
This is a, a barbed wire, woven wire.
Yeah, like a foot off the ground. He's like, oh, that's probably where they escaped. And I'm just sitting there, I'm like.
They walked right over the fence.
Cows don't crawl. Well, no, there was like three more above it. They were standing.
They'll squeeze right there and go through it. They won't stop. It's not tight.
Yeah, but yeah, I was like, yeah, I don't know if they like crawled under it like you're saying, but.
He has calves, cows and bull eating grass.
Where at? And like a very small lot too. I mean, it.
Where was this?
I could have pushmowed it.
Next to the vet office that has.
You know the house that he bought that white, the old white one? Yeah.
He's not gonna get a very good start.
He got a property maintenance letter.
About the house?
Because it's abandoned. He's not happy. He'll be here on June ninth. I may not be here June ninth, actually.
Yeah, that's not happening.
No, for reals though, I have a softball game and so I'm like, crap, how am I gonna do that in Mount Vernon?
You have to figure it out. I know I know.
We could set a laptop up or you can.
Zoom here, you can zoom mayor.
I'll be here. I can find.
Swing batter, batter, batter. Okay.
Hustle up, hustle up.
Run!
Just have it at the baseball game.
I can find someone else to take the baseball game.
Keep track of coaches, let's go guys.
Ready? We have to have one show, so they're waiting. They can be like, oh, sorry, that's long.
It's true. Well, maybe we need to follow up with the lawyer on that one. And uh, whether or no that the person has requested a hearing and therefore we need a response. If he doesn't sit on it indefinitely.
So who's requested a hearing? This way or this way?
Both.
Oh, okay.
John Smith.
Well, how much we got budget for all that nonsense?
Well, the dueling one should be pretty quick. He still has intentions. He came in all mad and talked to Guy. He just, he's busy right now. And Guy's like, yeah, come talk to them, set a timeline. You just need to know when.
Then he called Jeremy Hanley, so I'm pretty sure he's got it.
Good. So then he settled down. The other one's gonna be fun, but we actually need the lawyer to verify something first because we may have found a loophole that we can't actually enforce this. Cause the ordinance says one home building or premises on the same tap. Define premises. We're asking a lawyer to do that for us.
Can we re, re-write? Cause it would be a business problem.
We can, but then we can't either.
Exactly, but.
Yeah, it might be something we clarify going forward.
Very.
I think a premises would be the original layout.
According to Maryam Webster, it is a property in any of its outbuildings.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I can have one in my backyard, huh?
Maybe, we'll see what the lawyer says.
Get in before.
You guys can do it too, right?
But then do they have two homes? We don't know. We don't know how this one's gonna follow.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what.
Alright, we're gonna go. Welcome to our special council meeting on Thursday, May twenty-sixth at seven PM here at City Hall. We will call this meeting to order. Second item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We will waive that for this evening and move straight into roll call. Clerk, please.
Counselor Myers?
Here.
Counselor West?
Present.
Counselor Schant?
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg?
Present.
Counselor Trump?
Present.
Item number four, approval of the agenda. We do have a slight amendment that we need to add the FY twenty-two budget amendment resolution. So that will be item, new item number six. Following our public hearing. So I would seek a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to add the FY twenty-two budget amendment resolution.
So moved.
Moved by Myers.
Second.
Second by West. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number five, public hearing for the FY twenty-two budget amendment. We've now opened the public hearing for the FY twenty-two budget amendment. Clerk, we have proof of publication that this was published on?
May twelfth.
May twelfth? Any comments from the public? Did we have any written?
We received no comments written or otherwise.
And then we will close the public hearing for the FY twenty-two budget amendment. Item number six is the resolution for FY twenty-two budget amendment. So you should have a copy of that. This particular amendment is due to revenues from a FEMA grant for the Drake Show, the American Rescue Plan funding that came in, adjustments for the township contribution to the fire station project. And then an offset of our geo, geo bond refinance. Any questions? Do I need to read the resolution?
Uh, can you just read the number and the title?
If there are no questions, I would seek a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh-four. Resolution approving the City of Albernette budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-two-one to twenty-two. Moved by Schant?
Second.
Second by Trump. Is there a roll call on that one?
Counselor Bozenberg?
Yep.
Counselor Myers?
Yes.
Counselor Schant?
Yes.
Counselor Trump?
Aye.
Counselor West?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, city clerk treasurer, discuss, discuss authorization of mayor to make offer of employment. I will just give a brief update. We are in progress with interviews. It's going well. We do have some viable candidates. We've got at least one more interview to conduct. But in order to keep the process moving, I feel like we've moved pretty quickly, I would be seeking council approval to make an offer up to a certain salary so that we can, and that offer would be contingent upon council approval at our June ninth meeting, but that way I can at least have conversations with candidates, do a little bit of negotiating and um, lock in an offer before bringing that back to council. Cause I don't feel like it does any good for me to, for the committee to agree, me to come to council and say, hey, how, what do you think of this? If the candidate wouldn't even accept it. So I'm hoping to get council to approve that range tonight. So what we are thinking currently, the clerk is at a grade nine, step five, which is twenty-three, twenty, twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. For next year, next fiscal year, we did give a two-step increase due to inflation and just the nature of things. Uh, so we have budgeted for next fiscal year at twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents an hour. So um, again, that is all contingent upon any candidate's experience. Uh, we do have one particular candidate that does have sufficient clerk experience and so I would like to seek council approval to go as high as the twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents, depending on the experience of the candidate. I'd love a motion on that if I could.
So will.
Moved by Myers, second by Bozenberg. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright. Item number eight is the public works request, is requesting approval of additional part-time public work hours. Currently, our part-time worker is approved for up to twenty hours a week. Given that Guy may be spending some time in the office and just, this is a busy time of year. There's always mowing to be done and a lot of outside projects. Uh, he is requesting an increase in that. He wasn't necessarily specific on, on what. He thought thirty would be enough. My opinion would be, I would like to see us approve the forty with Guy's discretion, um, just watching hours, but, but there'd be no need for overtime, so. I would, I would seek council's approval on up to forty hours a week for our part-time public works worker through the summer.
Excellent, forty hours.
Does that change anything as far as like benefits? I know it's part-time, but.
Yeah, it's a great question.
It should not, cause it's still a part-time position. I don't really understand it, but.
Oh, we're gonna change his hours, Mike. We're not changing any of his duties or any of that.
What's that?
We need to put a stop date here.
Yes, I would recommend that.
We might want to look into what consists of a full-time position, how we look at it just in the future in terms of, is it hours, uh, annual hours? And see if, because there will be times in the future probably where this is going to happen or even, you know, where they're going to consistently touch forty hours. Depending on projects, so.
I guess I consider the handbook to see if you want to.
I mean, uh, regular part-timers, any employee works or scheduled to work at least twenty but less than forty per week.
So if they're scheduled less than forty, then we should be fine. If work dictates that they need to work additional hours, then we can ask them to work the extra hours upon that day. If it adds up to forty, then we should be alright. It's just if we schedule and say you're working the forty all week.
I'm assuming you're talking, use him as needed, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, Guy just wants to have the ability to have one for more than twenty, um, especially since it'll be taking on some of the court duties.
And they'll, and they'll vary from week to week, so we're not gonna, probably act as a full-time employee. I would, I would put a date on September first with the option to renew it if needed.
So what's that magic number? It does say less than forty. That was a good call, good catch on that one. We know thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thirty-six.
Yeah.
Somebody give me a motion?
I'll make a motion that we up the part-time person for thirty-five hours a week up to September first with the option to renew it.
Motion by Bozenberg?
Second.
Second by West?
We have thirty-five hours every, each and every week?
Up two, he'd be allowed up two.
Up two. Okay, I heard thirty-five hours. I didn't hear up two.
Up two.
And discretion of, if he needs thirty-five.
Okay.
Good clarification. Any other discussion questions?
Do you mind just sticking with your second after the discussion?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Alright, item number nine, final comments or discussion. Start to my left.
Nothing.
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 Just wanna reiterate, um, I miss our current clerk, right? That's it.
I'm gonna miss you guys too. You can creep on your meetings.
There you go.
There you go.
Come check on your feral cat.
On that note, I'd seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Trump, second by West, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.